Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the July 11th Auburn Main Planning Board. I will start with agenda item number one, which is roll call, and I will start to my left.
Darren Finnegan.
Dave Trask.
Paul Jacques.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Evan Seer.
Amanda Garrett.
Tony Ferraro.
All right, so I see that we have two Planning Board members not here, Tim DeRoche and Riley Bergeron, so we will be elevating Amanda to a regular planning board. Okay, so second item on the agenda are the meeting minutes, so I will seek a motion to approve or amend the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, and the motion carries. Okay, so third item on the agenda is a public hearing, special exception.
Before we go on, I apologize. I just want, on the record, that I'm abstaining from approval of the minutes. I did watch the meeting, but I was not present.
Okay, thank you. 431 Turner Street, Tony Ferraro, owner of Ferraro Realty, is requesting a change of use from retail to professional office space. So I'm going to take a pause real quick, because I think, as we know, Tony is also a member of the Planning Board, and I would like to see if she has anything to add.
I would like to add that I need to recuse myself.
Okay, perfect. So as Tony is recusing herself, I do have a question for staff. So we had seven Planning Board members, we are now down to six. Are we still in good shape?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
We need four.
Not anticipating the other two not being here. Great, so at this moment, I will hand it over to staff for a briefing.
Okay, thank you. So this proposal is to, is for a change of use for 431 Turner Street from currently retail to professional offices. The reason that this is before the board is because professional offices in the zoning district, U-4.2B, is considered a special exception, which requires Planning Board approval. So even though there is going to be very little change to the building, seemingly only cosmetic change from the outside, and adding a few walls to create offices on the inside, because of the use change, that is something that requires special exception, it does require Planning Board approval. So the use before this is also one that required, that was also a special exception, so it's moving, the building is moving from one special exception use from retail to another special exception use, real estate offices, and additional office and storage space above where there is currently an apartment. So we have, as staff, our only comments were to remove these two parking spots, parking spot one and two, shown on this, on this sketch, from the plan, because they're pretty close to the intersection of French's Lane and Turner Street. Our only other comment was to remove the parking sign that is right in front of that area. There is plenty of parking on the street in case, in case the applicant needs to have more than four cars at a time, but she noted that there are only a few employees, and that they're mostly, they mostly work offsite, so it sounds like it's moving to a slightly less traffic use than one that was currently there. And staff is recommending that the board approve this change of use, and, and that the only condition is to remove the two parking spaces at the corner of Turner Street and French's Lane, and remove the parking sign from the side of the building. And we are open to take any questions or thoughts.
Can you, so what does remove two parking spaces at the corner mean? Is that, because I'm guessing that even, like, even though you take down the sign, if there's physical space there, I'm guessing there might be a tendency to want to do that anyway.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, too, we have the applicant here, so, I mean, from a point of order, we can do either way. We can ask staff, or we can also move that, either works for me.
Well, there. Can I piggyback on that real quick, may answer the question. On-street parking is allowed here? So...
On-street parking is allowed here, yep.
So these wouldn't be marked as spots, but it also would not be illegal for someone to park on the side of the road there?
Right, so the, you know, the access management, or access management ordinance states that essentially, the first 20 feet from a stop sign is really not, does not allow parking, in theory. There's, we can certainly say that across the city, there are some spots like this, but anytime a site plan comes in front of us, we try to address the access management issue. So this is really just addressing an access management issue. It doesn't, but it doesn't deny, you know, it doesn't limit somebody from parking there that, you know, it's like parking in a no-parking zone, some people park there sometimes. We're just not allowing it, we can't allow this on a site plan in terms of our ordinance.
Does the city utilize, I know it utilizes the signs, no parking, from here to the corner. Is that something we could ask Public Works to put out there?
It could be, it could be something that we ask. French's Lane is not a, it's a side road, so it's really something that's probably not high on their priority list, but it's certainly something on a site plan we would want to address, that there'd be no parking there.
So I guess I go back to my question as to, how do you remove the, what, and maybe that'll be answered during the first, the other comment.
Yeah, so, yeah, so from our perspective, it's very simple. They show lines here, so if the Planning Board approved it like this, they would have to show striping. There's no striping currently there right now. So in reality, the physical thing that they need to do, there's a parking sign there now, they would need to take that parking sign down, and then they would be in compliance with their site plan. It's pretty, pretty simple. Other than that, there's no changes. The footprint of the building is the same, the parking and the impervious area is exactly the same, the sewer use, the water use, electric use, everything is the same, the interior of the building is still the same. It's just, again, as Catherine said, it's just a change of use that pushes us to Planning Board under Form-Based Code T-4.2B.
You mentioned striping. Is that staff's suggestion, that the applicant utilized yellow striping to indicate no parking in that, in that area?
We have not suggested that, no. We're not suggesting it, we're just suggesting no park, taking down the no-parking sign at this time.
Yeah, it's mostly to not show parking as an option there. But if you want to add that, you would be able to.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we open up to the applicant? All right, so if there's an applicant, you can come forward to the podium.
Hello, everyone. Brandon, I am one of the independent contractors with Ferraro Realty. So I just wanted to make note of the, the parking, there was a no-parking sign, there was a parking sign there, as mentioned, when the building was purchased, that has since been removed, and the town is currently, the end of this week, I'm told, going to be tearing up all of that pavement, be running new water lines. So any bit of the, if there was white paint, will all be gone, and at that point, there'll be no more parking left over. And as mentioned, the sign has been removed. Also, if you kind of take a look at the spot, it's pretty much right up against the building, so no one's going to want to be parking there. The, I think the biggest point to make, and has been, is that there is no real change to the footprint, the first floor, pretty much all we were asking was to put up a wall, just to put one office, and that's what it would continue to be, office-based. We are mostly independent contractors, so it's really only used as a satellite location. So we'll actually reduce the amount of traffic that's currently been there now.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, then I will seek a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, excellent, so public comment is open. So as you know, you come to the podium, you have five minutes, state your name and your address, and any thoughts or considerations you have around this project. Okay, seeing no members of the public coming forward, I will seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Hey, motion carries. Okay, so at this point in time, does anyone have any questions for staff, before then I will seek a motion on this project?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change of use from retail to professional office of 431 Turner Street, parcel ID 260-108. Proposal pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 3, special exception, Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 14, Form-Based Code of the following exception conditions: Remove the parking sign from the site of the building.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to amend, to include a condition, that there'll be removal of two parking spaces at the corner of Turner Street and French's Lane.
Okay, did you have a question about the parking sign as well?
Nope, the parking sign was included, but the spaces were not included as a condition.
All right, so do you have any questions about the amendment? Any discussion?
Would need to be seconded.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I guess between the proposed construction, fact that that would remove any lines unless there is either striping put down, or a no-parking here-to-corner sign, I don't think that there's any realistic, I think it is removed, and I don't think by adding a specific statement that says remove two parking spaces, I don't think there's anything left to remove, which is why I didn't include it.
I would think it would be important to include, because even though functionally those spaces will be removed, they exist on the site plan that's presented. So if we don't remove those from the site plan, we are approving those in perpetuity as part of the site plan. So functionally, they might go away, but they, they'll still exist and could be utilized.
So I guess I could go either way, and either add them back in, or add a sign that says no parking.
Okay, so he has a motion to amend, and his motion to amend is to remove the two parking spaces at the corner of Turner Street and French's Lane. We have a second, we have discuss, discussion, any more discussion, then I will call for, I'll make a call.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can we put a no-parking sign on the building, out front of the parking spots?
So if that is, that would be an amendment.
So when you, like, pull up, you would just see, on the building, it just says no parking?
So right now, what we're talking about is the amendment that Evan had made, to remove two parking spaces at the corner of Turner Street and French's Lane. We have a second, we have discussion, so all those in favor of the amendment that Evan had provided, by removing the two parking spaces, all those in favor? Okay, so, is it a tie? Oh, I elevated you. Yes. I haven't included him in yet. Okay, so all those in favor? Okay, so motion carries. All righty, so back to the original motion, or, back to the original motion, unless I have another amendment. Did you have an amendment to the original motion? Okay, so now we're back to the original motion, which Dave had noted, which is to approve the changes of use for retail, professional office, Turner Street. This proposal is pursuant to Chapter 60, special exception 60, et cetera, he had noted it. So any further discussion about the motion with the amendment? And if people can just quiet their phones, that would be greatly appreciated.
I like Amanda's suggestion with regard to just adding a sign, so that is clear, because otherwise, I don't, I still am going back to how they remove it without letting people know that there's supposed to be no parking there.
I make a motion to amend the site plan to include a no-parking sign on the French's side of the building in proximity to the parking spots to be removed.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. All right, got a little turned around there. We have the amendment, was that the final motion? Okay, all right, excellent, we can close this out. Okay, so at this point in time, before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I will...
We have to, we voted on that amendment, we now have to vote on the original amended mo, I apologize, I thought you meant just this.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, we have to take the final vote on the original.
Okay. All right, so was that a motion and amendment, or, because you just made it a motion?
I made a motion to amend, to include the parking sign, and that was, that amendment was approved. So now we've got a motion to approve the change with the three conditions.
Okay, all right. So back to the original motion. Would you like Dave to restate the original motion? Would you like Dave to restate the original motion?
I don't, we don't need to...
I think I have it, yeah.
Yeah, we have it, we're all set, we just need a, we just need a vote, as Evan indicated.
Okay, so we had a second, so all those in favor of Dave's original motion?
Plus the amendment.
Plus the amendments.
Plus the amendments. Well, plus the two amendments.
Yes.
Okay, all right, motion carries. Okay, so at this time, I will recognize that Riley Bergeron is a full member, he is present, so then, that then for you, Amanda, put you back as an associate member, recognizing that Tony just is now back on the board, as well as a full member, we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing, text amendment, considering proposal, text change to, and this is a petition, by the way, front setbacks principle from traditional downtown neighborhood, Ashwin, the citizen's petition submitted on June 12th, so I will hand it over to staff for briefing.
Thank you. So this petition was submitted by Jessica Klemic and the folks who submitted the petition, or who circulated the petition altogether. Within the timeframe that's appropriate to hear this as a public hearing tonight, the petition is to, is to clarify the language about setbacks specifically in the zone T-4.2B, traditional downtown neighborhood, Form-Based Code. So the current language, so staff currently understands that front setbacks in T-4.2 and T-4.2B may be measured from shared access ways, private ways, and shared parking areas. This petition seeks to clarify this understanding by adding the underlying language to Section 60-548B as follows. So the existing text, where adjacent buildings exceed the maximum setback, the maximum setback may be calculated by the average setback of the principal structures on adjacent lots. For undeveloped adjacent lots, a setback of 25 feet shall be used for the calculation. So that's the language that already exists in the, in the code. The added language would be, quote, "where a private shared access drive is provided serving more than one structure," in parentheses, "minimizing access points on any public road," end parentheses. "The front setback shall be measured from the private access drive, pedestrian accessway, or parking area." So staff thinks that this is the correct interpretation of the, of the zone, but we do recommend tabling this vote today, because staff thinks that there would be some other changes that would be appropriate to add to T-4.2B as a loop, or as a, as a, as a group, rather, and including, for example, the building facade, I think some of the residential restrictions on, on building facades for residential buildings are a little bit too restrictive in this zone. So staff has some other ideas, and we're also hoping to seek some legal counsel on the wording of this petition, to see how it would really apply, it would apply currently in our ordinance, and with, and with projects that have recently come through, and are coming through in the future, and might be coming through in the future. I'm not talking about any project in specific. So our recommendation is that we table this until a date certain of August 8th, and that is my suggestion, but any questions, I'd welcome.
I do have a question. Under Article 17, Division 1, in Chapter 60, Section 60-1448, Submittal of Completed Petition. It states, "Within 45 days of submittal of a completed petition to amend the zoning ordinance, text or map, the Planning Board shall hold a public hearing thereon." I am kind of reticent to table it to a date that would be after that 45 days, for fear that regardless of what the board decides, if someone withstanding is unhappy with the decision, regardless of which way it goes, they now have grounds upon which to challenge the decision of the board.
I actually asked the same question, and, you know, we were really specific of going back to the applicant in this one, and stating that we really need to address multiple issues that's, that are occurring in T-4.2B, and, you know, Catherine stated a couple of them, really having a definition for single-family homes and duplexes. We want to have more flexibility for that ability. I think we've got a lot, we, over the past year since I've been here, we've been working through this, we've heard over and over again about flexibility for single-family homes and, and addressing, specifically addressing that. So we wanted not to just take one thing at a time, but collectively sit down and look at everything in, in the Form-Based Code, get legal counsel approval on it, and then propose it back to the, to the Planning Board. I do understand that once the changes are made, there will have to be another notification submitted, and there will have to be another public notice submitted. Even though we have a date certain, we still have to send notice. We've gotten our clear direction on that, that's going to come up again, unfortunately, today, on some other things that we're working on, but we just haven't had the time to do it, and we need to sit down and work through the items based on staff time.
So you're not asking us to, you're not suggesting that we table at this point? You're asking us to consider table and a final decision?
That's correct, yep. Final decision with additional staff amendments.
Okay.
Okay, so any questions for staff at this point in time? If not, the petitioner wants to come forward?
Hi, good evening, Jessica Klemic, Auburn resident on Briar Cliff Knoll, also the applicant for this 25 signature petition. I understand, you know, the reasoning as far as staff requesting to have some additional time. I, I don't feel that there's any issue with doing that, I think that anything that would help as far as staff, if they want to try to tackle some additional, some changes, in this case, our petition, you know, specifically is more so looking for clarity than any kind of change, so, you know, my only concern would be just to ensure that if this is brought back, and there are changes per se, versus clarity to the ordinance, if Planning Board disagrees on, you know, potential changes, that it can be separated out, and an opportunity to not just blanket, you know, not approve the changes, but that if those changes and the clarifying points that we've requested within our petition can be considered somewhat separate. So outside of that, I have no issue with this being tabled, to give staff the opportunity to take advantage of, you know, take some additional time, that's, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner before I move on? Sorry. We all good?
I do have a follow-up for staff. Did I hear that we haven't gotten legal counsel on, on this specific language of this text amendment yet?
No, we have not.
Okay.
But I guess, you know, Evan, to go back to your point, not, not to just continue to talk about this, but we, we do have to have cooperation from the applicant, from staff, and from the Planning Board for this, you know, to go in this route. It's very clear in our ordinance that we have to have complete agreement on this, that this is, this is our way forward, so.
Any questions? If not, then I will seek a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Second, have a second? Okay, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. So I am opening up public comments, so again, you have five minutes, come to the podium, state your name, your address, and just as a point of order as well, just for all the folks that are here tonight, after we close public hearing, after each agenda item, if there are any questions, we will address it with staff, but, but do note that we are taking notes about your public comments and/or any questions that you have. So I will start the clock.
Good evening, my name's Jeffrey Harmon, I live at 34 Vista Drive. I have three comments to make about this item that are related to legal matters associated to it, and I have a letter here from Kristen Collins at Pretty Flaherty, that I will provide to staff, for the, for the members of the Planning Board, that more fully describes what I can say in five minutes. So the first item is that the proposed change is not a clarification, it's a substantive change to the ordinance, and such a change would be inconsistent with the Form-Based Code. So today, in the ordinances, Form-Based Codes in general, the purpose of those codes is codified in the ordinances, and in more detail in T-4.2B, and this change would be inconsistent with that. So in effect, you would be making a change to T-4.2B that would be contrary to the purpose of T-4.2B that you've already passed. The second point that I would make is that such a change would create inconsistency amongst the Form-Based Codes. So there's multiple Form-Based Codes that have been enacted, there's 5.1, 4.1, 4.2, 4.2B, and making this change here would cause inconsistency in that the manner in which a set, a front setback is measured would be different than any of the other Form-Based Codes. So one would think that there should be consistency amongst those. And the third point that I would make is that, within this petition, there's a proposed retroactive provision that in effect is waiving the provision of Title I, Section 320. That would be illegal for the Planning Board of the City of Auburn to do. Title 38 MRSA 30076 would prohibit any type of retroactivity as is requested in this petition. So I'll provide these to staff, and go into more detail in the letter. Thank you very much.
If you would like any other members, yep, sure, go ahead.
I was going to await Ms. Cook's distribution of those documents before beginning.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Stephen B. O. 575 Johnson Road. The board will probably recognize the subject matter of this language and this setback definition, as having been a principal feature of the board's site location and special exception approvals of the stable Ridge 2 Phase, excuse me, Stable Ridge Phase 2 proposal in March, which the board then approved. And Abutter took exception to the construction that the corporate counsel, the city's lawyer, and the staff took with respect to how to measure these setbacks. and the staff took with respect to how to measure these setbacks, whether from a public way or a private access way. The approval was given with respect to the ordinance of the language as presented before these amendments that are before you tonight, which purport to clarify the previous language, but I agree with Mr. Harmon, actually add a substantive difference. The abutter took exception to the Board's passage of the approvals with that construction of the language measuring access from private ways, pedestrian walkways, or parking lots. That appeal is currently pending in the Andrus Cloggin County Superior Court across the street. It's in the active phase of litigation. Some briefs have been filed, at least one more is to be filed, and then there's going to be some judicial determination at some future point in time. No one knows when that will be. It doesn't make any sense to go making further ordinance amendments now when we don't know whether, in fact, the city's position on the existing language is to be construed as the correct interpretation, or whether the abutter's view of the construction of the language is to be deemed correct. That may not occur until the future, won't occur until the future, but it will perhaps cause an entirely different construction to be placed on the ordinance, and it doesn't make any sense to attempt to clarify a construction that may be overturned in the future. One additional feature of this is that all of this costs money. If this interpretation were added now and further action taken based on this interpretation of the language, and that language is deemed to be not the correct legal construction, there are going to be more costs for the city for additional actions potentially. The city is the subject of this suit, the Water District is the subject of two other suits, the thrust of which is that the Water District didn't do enough to counteract actions taken by the city. That's the essence of those two pending other actions. So litigation costs are increasing and may increase greatly further if action is taken on this at this time. In terms of the staff's proposal to defer action until August eight, as is contained in the staff memo, we may not have an answer from the Superior Court by August eight. There ought to be a deferral until a point in time after a court determination is made, which would then provide for adequate notice to be given based on that court interpretation. So that could be sometime in the future. It does require re-noticing, but it's better to do it right and not have to go through more litigation.
Good evening. My name is John Cleveland. I live at one-eighty-three Davis Avenue in Auburn. I'm here because I concur with the staff recommendation here that this is premature to act on this item this evening. I'm going to be brief because others have mentioned some of this as well. This is not a simple clarification. This is a substantive change to the ordinance that's going forward. In fact, it's really an effort to circumvent the legal process that's currently going on now, and is asking this Planning Board to interject itself into a pending legal matter that's exactly on this point. This is what the legal matter is. And I suspect that this recommendation isn't the purpose to make the T four point two B clearer for the entire city. The, I think the idea here is to circumvent the legal issue that's currently pending for the developer whose action is there at the, at the court, and it's inappropriate for a Planning Board to interject themselves this way. Further, I'd like to also underline as well, if when you read this petition that was sent to you, it specifically says that the intent is to make it retroactive. That means you would have to not withstand state law in Title One, Section three-twenty, which is very clear that a municipality or Planning Board does not have any authority to not follow state law. You can't do that. Through my experience, both here locally and at the State Senate, I can say that with one hundred percent assurance, that you do not have the authority to do that. So I would recommend that you follow the staff recommendation. There are other items that they have said that they want to modify this T four point two. Makes far more sense to take this all up at one time and not piecemeal, and to think about the consequences of all of these recommendations as it affects four-point-two-B. So I'd urge you not to act on this and to table it this evening.
Hi, Jessica Klemick, Auburn resident on Briar Cliff Knoll. So I feel that city staff has been very clear, Planning Board and on previous occasions and public hearings have been very clear in terms of setbacks specific to T four dot two B and specific to Stable Ridge Phase One and Phase Two. I think there's a reason why Stable Ridge Phase One and Stable Ridge Phase Two came before Planning Board with a full site plan and layout. There was discussion specific to setbacks, and we received approvals. And I think the reason why we see that there are individuals coming up here today and opposing a decision on this petition, which is clarity, and it does support the position of city staff within this appeal and the position that they are firmly taking, and the reason why they are asking you to not approve this clarifying language is because they know it does the complete opposite. It creates potentially a moot point for this, this appeal, which is only going to save taxpayer dollars in terms of fighting against something that clearly staff has stated that these are the setbacks, this is the intention of this ordinance. And so I just ask you not to be fooled by the arguments to say, you know, no decision should be made prior to any kind of court ruling. That's absolutely not the case because this petition is asking for clarification that supports city staff when it comes to setbacks for T four dot two B. So I just wanted to make those comments known. Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the public that would like to come forward? If not, then I will seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so excellent. At this point in time, we can address any questions that we heard from the public. I'm not really sure I heard any per se, and then if we have any kind of clarifying questions based upon the conversation with, in the comments from public comment, then we can address it with staff.
I have a question for, for staff with regard to allowing an opportunity for legal review and advice. I'm assuming the, the, whether or not it's legal or not to make it retroactive is something that would be considered as part of that legal review, correct? Certainly now that it's part of public comment, we would, we would certainly want to address that with the city solicitor on that specifically.
I don't understand that part to be a part of the petition, but as the explanation behind it, so I, I don't think that that would be included in the, that wouldn't be a given if this were to be passed as it were, as it is now. I don't think, but it's still, just to be safe, it's better to wait.
Okay, so at this point in time, we can have a seek a motion, we can have further questions, deliberations, work with staff.
I do have a comment. I understand that staff would like to look at some additional changes. I think that procedurally, though, we could not include those in the public hearing next month unless that zone change was initiated, and there are only three ways for that to happen. That can happen through the council, through us, or through a citizen petition as we're seeing here tonight. My worry is that if we were to table for the specific purpose of waiting for additional comments from staff to include language not pertinent to this, that we would create issues with regard to those changes.
Yeah, and I think that's why we're, you know, we're really going to lean on the city attorney on that, for that interpretation. So we're, we're getting some guidance early on that we really need to be more open about the text changes, and we, we will address that with, I'm sure with a letter from the city attorney on that process. And if it can't be done, then, you know, we're going to stick to the point as you brought up. So I haven't had direct conversations yet, so I don't, I don't know what the thought process is, but this is the initial direction that we were given, so.
If staff's intent is to do that, would it be possible for you guys to seek specific clarification on that point? The idea that you, your desire is to present text language, but is it the sort of thing where in August, that might be a workshop, and we determine whether or not we vote to initiate a formal zone?
Potentially, yeah. And, and I think that, you know, a condition out of this tabling could be requesting legal counsel's opinion on, on what you're stating, so that could be another avenue as well.
Oh, I wrote, I already wrote that down.
I have a, I have a question. Does the tabling this specific petition necessarily table, like, do the, the other changes of T four point two B you guys have necessarily have to be linked to this petition? Are they going to be dealt with two separate procedural?
I think, Riley, I think right now we're trying to link them together, but Evan's questioning if we should separate them or it should become a workshop, you know, in terms of process. So I think we're going to rely on our, our legal opinion on that, and we'll, we'll move
So if, if we were to, if we were to table this specific petition and you were to get legal counsel on it, it could come back as just this petition with these other changes? Or would it come back just as this, and then there'd still be a separate workshop for the other changes that, to the, to the zone?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I think we're gonna, we're gonna seek that clarification.
Yeah, I think the petition remains as it is itself, but whether or not, I think what we're trying to figure out is whether or not those other things can be brought with, with it as a group. I kind of think that the petition will have to stand on its own because it is the, the voice of twenty-five citizens that are brought forward for specifically that. So one thing you could do also as a board is you could recommend that we consider this with, like, we consider this language, you could direct us to consider this language with other language, we could bring it back all as a workshop, even, that could be an option if you, if you want to do that, too. I think there are a few ways that you could go about this.
That was really my thought, was that this petition, the twenty-five people that didn't sign up for the, the staff changes, so I don't think it should be dealt with as two separate procedural.
I was just going to say the same thing. I think that that would be the, the thing to do.
I'd agree with that.
So if we tabled it, we could also initiate another discussion to be considered with it, I guess contextually, but as, as in more text changes to T dash four point two B, but procedurally as two different items, I imagine.
Yeah, I think I've got a motion in mind. I have two different motions. Since we're discussing that, instead of this, I feel like we're probably done asking questions about this petition to staff, so I'm going to make a motion to table the vote on amending Section sixty dash five-four-eight-B dash front setback principle for traditional downtown neighborhood, T dash four point two B, as shown in the citizen's petition submitted June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, until August eight, two thousand twenty-three, or such time that staff has been able to seek legal counsel on the text amendment as presented in the petition.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, do you have discussion? If I see no discussion, then I will seek a vote. All those in favor? Okay, excellent, motion carries.
I would ask the chair to allow me to make a motion, an additional motion with regard to this topic.
Staff?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion that we direct the planning staff to look for additional change, identify additional changes within the Form-Based Code that they believe are, are appropriate and needed, and that those be presented to us at our August eight, two thousand twenty-three meeting, or a meeting at which the staff feels they are prepared to present.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have discussion? All right, I will seek, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Any other motions? Okay, so moving on to the next agenda item, so we're moving into public hearing zoning map amendments. So we have Part Two, T point, four point two B, Area A, Area B, Area C, and Area D. And I just share this for the group because there was some review in consideration as we looked at the maps, and the new maps that you received today when you walked in for the Planning Board meeting were actually handed to you in this Planning Board public hearing, July eleventh, map updates, areas A, B, C, and D. So I share that. So as we have a discussion with staff, these are the maps that we are going to be referring to. Do not refer to the maps that are actually within your staff packet. So these are the ones that John and Catherine are going to be referring to. To that end, again, so the staff packets at this point in time have changed, so have some of the suggestions and next steps, so I want you to just pay careful attention to what staff is sharing, considerations, next steps, and how we are planful as we move forward with this very important change within these zones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, just, we're going to kind of roll all these areas up. I'm going to go over this. I think the intent is still the same as what we originally submitted in the, in the staff reports. We've really kind of wrestled with this as, as staff and even through the Planning Board about our, our process and making sure that our process is really, really good and really upfront. And we, we submitted all the documents, we, we put it out for, for the public hearing, and then unfortunately, some of the items a year ago that we talked about were not necessarily one hundred percent included, and, and we were adjusting some of these boundary lines. So what we're really asking is that we table the decision for all, all four of these areas, and I'm going to go through specifically what those items are. I think we know the gist about, and I'll touch a little bit, I think we've got some new Planning Board members here, and we're going to touch a little bit about what Form- Based Code is, what's, what is Form-Based Code four point two B, what it allows. If the tabling is approved by the Planning Board, we are going to have to go to public hearing, public notice again. Because this is a public notice today, we'll, we'll have to vote on these each individually. But I just, I, I just wanted to start with that, that this was really picking up something that was a year ago and putting it into the public process and identifying that there is some things that when we start getting down into the nitty-gritty, I think regardless, the Planning Board would have picked up on a lot of these items, but we just wanted to kind of bring them forward and really say that, that we know that there needs to be some ironing eye of the final details of, of these zones, but I think we- some ironing eye of the final details of, of these zones, but I think we've got a good product. I think we're still heading in the right direction. But I, but I do want, want to kind of start with that, with that.
Yeah, and I'm gonna jump in here real quick, if you don't mind, John, just to kind of like say what you said, but in a different way, just so everyone's clear on guidance on where we're going with this. So again, he is going to show the most updated maps. So that is for us to consider today, and those maps are, you know, in this packet right here. And then also he's going to describe to us what we can anticipate in the future, right? So I'll give you an example. There are some transportation items that need to be cared for within this zone map amendment. We don't have it today, but it will be coming in the future. So we've got kind of future state right now, we've got, we have current state right now, we've got some future state that we're going to be anticipating. But to that end too, we'll still be doing public comment as well. So this is a great opportunity for the public, which I do love to see here, to not only see the current maps that we have today, understand also what we're going to be planning for, for future, and then also get your comments as well. So.
Yep. And I just want to add to that, just one more little addition, that for the public, the maps that you received in the mail are the maps that we are presenting, that we are having the public hearing on. The, the maps that are also included in this presentation that we have are starting to hint at how we are thinking of tweaking those maps. And this conversation today is really meant to get, get a list of any tweaks, any revisions from the public too. So when we put this, when we put this notice out for August 8th, we will have the, hopefully the, the maps that will be approved on August 8th without any more changes. So that's the goal from today is to really solidify our intentions, the meets and bounds, and, and get it right.
Area A and the future mobility corridor. Move on to that slide. So here we're looking at changing the rural residential, urban residential, and multifamily suburban area, about 936 acres to T four point two B. I think the important piece here is that all of this area is being considered, but there's two things that are being pointed out here is that in green, as you see, that's highlighted in this area, that's what's considered a future mobility corridor. It's identified in the comp plan, it's identified in the turnpike interchange planning efforts. That started as early as mid to late 90s. And then the, it also identifies that we, as planning board members, and it's not necessarily the underlying zoning would change, but that we, there would be special consideration for future development. So that's a, that's a big change, that's a substantial change in this, in this map that we've identified. And then secondly, I don't, we don't have them identified here, but as we go through the public hearing suggested language, there's five parcels that's essentially part of the multifamily area that are right now conservation land. And really what we're, we're suggesting there is that, that T four point two B that we have proposed here be replaced with basically a conservation open space district, the COS. So, and that totals about 133 acres. So that, those are the substantial changes. One might not say that, well, this is not a lot of, this doesn't seem like a lot, doesn't feel like a lot, but we, we went back to the, again, we went back to counsel on this and they said, well, yep, these are substantial. We, we're gonna need to have another public hearing and do an, do another public notice on those. So we lessen that 936, we lessen that by 133 acres. The, the four point two B, the green that we have shown here, and we say updated map, the green really needs to be that kind of the aqua color. If we're going by our specific zoning maps and our colorations, our current colorations is aqua, that was the green that we were using a year ago. We have changed that symbology since then. So it's really making some corrections and, and again, working out the fine details and then looking for, you know, planning, planning boards' input on that. I, I go to the form-based code, kind of the, the generalities about T four point two B. You know, what, what's the setbacks, you know, what's the lock coverage? It's five, you know, five foot setbacks, 25 foot max, three, three stories with attic space, you know, upwards to 14 units per acre. And then we have the four point two B, the uses that are allowed there and the parking matrix. I just put that in there for reference for folks. What is, what is four point two B and what does it allow? So these are a lot of the items that are allowed and, you know, with a key for a special exception permitted. I'm not going to go down through all of them, but it, it really allows a range of residential type uses from single family to multifamily. And then it allows professional offices, retail type uses, civic uses. So those, those are some of the things that, that are allowed in, in that zoning district. I think all of you have had some exposure to T four point two B, but I just put it in here for a reference so you guys could have a good handle on it. If you had a question about it, you know, staff is, is here. I'm gonna go through, there's the, the, so this is one single public hearing, and this is the, the next slide is really the suggested motions. Again, it identifies the five parcels, updates the map to reflect the matching color of the existing zone, and it hatches out a clear area for a mobility corridor for future traffic planning considerations, and adjusts the acreages. I think it, we're just trying to give you a clear path for success so we can all know what we need to identify. But as we analyze this, as you reviewed the initial staff reports, we're certainly open for more comments or questions at this time.
Okay, so what I'll ask, just a kind of a point of order is, my preference is to go through each area one by one, have a public hearing, and then have a motion independently. I know that this report, this kind of printout looks a little different than our staff reports, right? Because we would go like from report, staff report to staff report. But just recognize that though this is collectively together in, you know, A through D, we're gonna chunk them off each individually. So right now we're talking about that area A and, so I'll see if anyone has any questions for staff as it is specific to this parcel.
I do.
Okay.
In looking at our initial packet as well, and then looking at what was handed out tonight, I don't see actually, other than the color change in the bolded green in the middle, which is I guess the future mobility corridor, I'm not seeing any substantive changes to the area being considered. And I guess I'm wondering why, just because the color needs to change slightly from one green to another, that we need to punt this to another week? Like I said, I'm still not quite clear on why we need to not talk about this tonight.
Yeah, so I had, I had the same feeling you did, and I think others, I'm not going to speak for others on the board, but they probably agree with you as well. But I went back to, to our, again, our city attorney and got the advice that we needed to do that. They were substantive changes that could be challenged in the future and that if we want a solid recommend, recommendation going forward, that this was the best process. There are far, five parcels that are, would be conservation open spaceland, and that really looks like, that is, really looks a little bit different in terms of the color of the map. It actually changes the zoning of those five lots of 133 acres. So that, that in itself is a substantive change. I asked that same question.
So the proposed change in the, in this would actually have another change to reflect the coloring reflective to the, those protective spaces?
That's correct, yes. I, I, I just identify those as items that we need to address. We haven't had time to, to make the updates to the map. I'll be quite frank, our GIS person is off, was off the last two weeks. We just hadn't connected on any of these updates and done any of these, any of the substantial mapping that needs to occur to get a product out there, so.
And I want to just, this, we didn't include the areas because we, we, I don't have the ability to get them exact with the meets and bounds, but these areas that I have in blue kind of represent the five parcels that we're talking about excluding. So this parcel over here is owned by Andersgagen Land Trust. This actually, we didn't mean to exclude, this is somebody's house, so ignore that. But this one is Houston Field, this parcel here. This is River, I think Riverview Cemetery or Oak Hill Cemetery, which one is it? It's, it's a cemetery over here, sorry, the name is eluding me. And this is Sherwood Heights, and this parcel here is, or Sherwood Forest rather, sorry. And this parcel right here is also owned by the Andersgagen Land Trust. So really what we want to do is reflect for the purposes of somebody looking at the zoning map to see, thinking that they might be able to build in an area if they're new to the city. We want our zoning to reflect the reality on the ground. So the purpose of leaving those out is, is to do just that.
I do have a question about area A. This is part of a very long, I think the longest zoning amendment process that I've been a part of in 12 years. So last year, these, these parcels were discussed in depth and workshopped quite a bit at the planning board. I'm not seeing any of the changes that the planning board indicated they wanted to see in these maps. Last year, for instance, there was discussion about proximity to water and sewer, but that it not absolutely needing that, but that that was a priority of, of members of the board, or that areas, excuse me, would be included that might sort of create infill where we want to see infill or redevelopment of unused parcels right now. And at, at the time, I remember us sort of saying that we didn't really want to go, we didn't want to touch that transportation corridor that you're talking about or anything south of that even. Or actually, I guess, well, you could say south of that, I guess, sort of southwest of that. But that there was a desire to consider including sections of Main Street up to the Turnpike Overpass though, given that there's residential development along that corridor and potential for additional residential development, given the conditions on the ground out there. So I, I guess, I didn't need to be long-winded about what those things were that we wanted. I guess I'm wondering why those hadn't, still have yet to be incorporated in the discussion that we're having.
I think the, the actual hatching of the clear area for mobility corridor addresses some of those concerns that you have. It was, it was thought that in discussion with staff, that some of the areas that don't have sewer and water, we were looking at a, an additional, we addressed that by doing an additional study with the sewer, sewer district, and we're identifying where those areas, where we need to bring sewer and water in. We're just actually going to be reviewing those reports. In response to the planning board, we responded by going out and doing a physical study on where the sewer and water is. I think that that could be certainly something that we could include in the report and include in the, the tabling and addressing that in the August 8th meeting. We can incorporate some of that information that we've learned from these recent reports that we're going to be reviewing this week and making suggestions for the expansion areas or taking it away if it makes no economic sense, where the gravity's not there, or the pipe's going to be too deep, there's not going to be any type of return on investment. But we, we did hear the planning board loud and clear a year ago, and we've been working on a study with Wright and Pierce and the Water, Water and Sewer District over the last year, and we just got the reports back last week, again, with a meeting set up, I believe for tomorrow.
Thank you for addressing that. Yeah, and I don't think we said that it can't happen where there is no city water and sewer, but I think you've addressed that and that we said, but where does it make sense in the future? So, thank you.
So John, the city services, water and sewer end at the end of that T four two zone, right? At Mill Street and Broad Street merge?
Catherine's got it up there. It, it basically, currently today, it runs, it runs through the existing UR area and partially, I think in the north area, the multifamily suburban, if you scroll up, but that's, that's all water and sewer right there. And there's some water that extends back into the multifamily.
So it's that Broad Street area that
Yeah, yeah.
we were concerned about last year.
Yeah, and that's exactly where we did our study. So we're looking at possible locations for cross-country lines, using gravity whenever we can. Eric and I spent a lot of time looking at the engineer's grades and, and looking at the topography, and we're trying to formulate a plan of, of what would be the best way to do that. What would be the most economic way to develop that land? And we're doing it with, with the sewer district as well. So I, I would be happy to report back to the, to the planning board on that. That's, I did sewer and water for 10 years as a consultant. That's kind of my wheelhouse thing, I'm very comfortable with it. And I would be happy to, to share with you the, the results of that report and make recommendations based off of that.
Is that just related to the, to area A, the sewer study, or is that related to all the?
There, there is some other locations that we looked at. We looked at some areas up on Grace Lawn, but those were the two primary areas specifically that we looked at.
John, can you explain to me what the future mobility corridor is, seeing this is the first time that I'm new to the planning board, as to what the purpose of that is, being that it looks to me relatively far away from the turnpike, actually?
Right, so this is only the area that we're considering for a zone change, and we just want to highlight that, that, you know, as a planning board and as planning staff, we, we should be really aware of if we allow this zoning in this location, that there could be complications in the future. So, meaning it could cost more to build a new exit someday. We're really, we don't want to identify exactly where that exit would be, but just talk in general terms that from, from the turnpike and then across town and through this area that we've identified and then linking up with an existing corridor that we have today, that's, that's the location. And, and in general terms, those are the locations.
Is that the whole, is that, is that?
Yeah, so that, that green space is, that's really about a thousand foot, maybe a little bit more than that. I think anywhere in that area, we should, we should be aware that there is future, there may be future development potential, you know, turnpike development potential, and we shouldn't probably allow multifamily. and, and we shouldn't probably allow multifamily housing in there, really high-density housing in there.
Have we gotten any indication from the turnpike? I've heard about this for years and it's never occurred. And I've heard people say it's not a thing and then it comes back around again. Do we know from the Turnpike Authority as to whether or not this is actually on their five, ten, fifteen-year plan?
So it's not currently on their plan right now, but we keep putting it, we keep putting it up front and center. And then part of that is getting the densities surrounding the area up. We need to get the densities up. So we need to provide, you know, we didn't, we need to have more housing to allow that to occur. You know, Scarborough just had one, Bedford's having a new exit put in, Old Orchard just got one. You know, many people think that, you know, City of Auburn should be on the list. And making that connectivity from the turnpike down to the downtown really, really critical to this area. So we, we do have a, a full corridor. I know we highlighted just the area in the Form Based Code, but we do have a kind of a full corridor identified. Catherine actually put a map together today that we would, you know, we would share with the group in general conversation for the, for the next meeting, so.
Thank you.
I'm going to harp on this again. I guess to that end, again, that was part of our discussion last year when we discussed why would we go down Broad Street versus extend along South Main? The states made it very clear that if we want an additional exit, we need, the New Auburn needs to continue, okay? And South, South Main, that corridor, as soon as you leave, so I grew up on Enfield Street, so I was right there. You go past Ipswich and bam, it's like the neighborhood stops, right? And you've got, you've got a few houses and then you've got a huge area of open land that's not currently houses. And then you've got a few more houses and, and then there you are, you're, you're at the Turnpike Overpass. And you've got Lubia Way on the way, on, on the left where people have been building. But I'm saying, if the goal is to create density, if it's additionally to be able to tap into city water, city sewer, I, I just don't understand why we wouldn't continue the natural progression of the neighborhood branching off along South Main Street instead of going down, down Broad. Because when you drive down Broad, I could tell you, I could be on Broad Street and if I walked a straight line, I could be right up in the Auburn, New Auburn neighborhood with dense houses, dense lots. I grew up in a eight-hundred-and-ninety-square-foot house that had like fifty-foot of frontage, okay? Lots of, lots of homes, nice neighborhood. But down on the Broad Street side, there's, there's nothing. And, and it's, I just don't get it. It's, it's, there's areas that are steep. I just don't understand, like if, if the point that we're trying to get at is to create this density that we're looking for in the comp plan, we also know we need density for the turnpike. And we've, we've got a dense neighborhood right there that we can butt up against without and continue, and continue in a natural way. I just don't understand why that, I guess I'm going to beat a dead horse because I, I went off, I'm sure collectively for hours last year on this specific topic. I just don't understand why that's not, not on the table. Like, I can tell you, I have no appetite to block off some future transportation corridor down in the Broad Street area if we're not actually going to create the density near the turnpike that would allow us to have a, a turnpike exit. To me, it seems like land banking for a future project that we're never going to get because we haven't followed the steps we need to get there.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we move to public comment? Okay, so at this juncture, I would seek a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so members of the public, come to the podium. You have five minutes, state your name, your address. And again, this is just about the Area A, so I'm just letting people, reminding people of that.
All right, great. My name's Ryan Smith, my address is fourteen Weaver Street. And although this is about Area A, I'm going to make my comments specific to it, but I'm not going to come up four times. It, it basically applies to all of it, so. I want to just talk about the public process thus far. I've been attending these meetings since a lot of these conversations began. And I just haven't seen a lot of community engagement from people in these neighborhoods. And this is a great avenue for people to come and comment, but it's not really what I consider engagement. These changes essentially already been decided and already underway. And people in the neighborhoods are catching up. And I, I'd say that at this point, based on the mailings and the information available, a lot of people don't even realize what's going to be permitted here other than what staff has given us today. And I just want to say, I don't think this zoning fits these neighborhoods. When I think about these neighborhoods here that we are just discussing, I see a lot of single-family houses. And it's not that I disagree that maybe we could allow for less road frontage per building. I mean, my house has fifty feet of road frontage, I don't see an issue with it. But when I think about going halfway down one of these dead-end roads and putting in a medical office, I go, all right, that doesn't, you lost me. That doesn't make sense. And then a retail shop, it doesn't make sense. A restaurant up to thirty seats, really doesn't make sense to me because sixteen of those can be outside and I could imagine, living in a house there for twenty years, and I put a pool in and I look next door and the people decide to make that building a restaurant, I know I have sixteen people staring at me while I'm sunbathing. It just, it, again, it doesn't make sense to me. This also allows for private clubs and indoor amusement. And all of this could be down any of those streets, any of them. It doesn't matter what's probable, but what's possible. So in zoning, we have to look at it parcel by parcel. And I actually really appreciate Evan's comments on extending that down for a turnpike exit because that would be a strip zone. And that would make a lot more sense to me, to do a strip zone and maybe make those neighborhoods a little bit denser to allow for some infill residential development. And you just cured pretty much all my objections and probably a lot of the citizens' objections also that you're going to hear today. But these people would have to deal with traffic down their streets, parking shortages because there's no additional parking required for that thirty-seat restaurant. So they're going to park right on the streets of a single-family neighborhood. Again, it does, I couldn't imagine my street, on Weaver Street, people parking on the side of the road because someone put in a restaurant. Foot traffic down there predominantly, single-family neighborhoods, the noise, I mentioned privacy violations, and it really doesn't make sense to me. So far, I know we did the Court Street stuff and that's not related to this, but essentially there was not much of a public process and we really felt short-changed. Seeing how four-point-two and then the runaround the citizens' petition to create four-point-two B, it seems like these citizens are also receiving a lot of the same treatment from the City of Auburn. I would like to see something closer to the Ag Zone process where the staff, I applaud them for engaging the community and creating Proposal B, which is an amazing compromise and solution, and although it's not perfect, I think that's more of a process I would love to see for these neighborhoods to really do it justice, which would involve these people that are here today and others who couldn't make it, getting their say in what happens in their neighborhood. So again, I will, I will plug the idea of strip zones to make better sense here. But I also just have one more issue and that's the timing. So I sat right here in the Court Street rezonings and I told both the planning board and the council that I felt like we were making those changes, four-point-two and four-point-two B, because the developer wanted to develop a parcel. Both times I said that, once they passed through planning, once they passed through council, the very next planning board meetings, phase one and phase two, came subsequently. Just recently, we had a developer show up to planning board and say, I want to develop this parcel. And now the City of Auburn's saying, why not rethink rezoning? So to me, the timing just doesn't sit well. I don't think zoning is to cater to one developer. I think it's to come up with a solution to bigger issues and be considerate to the people who have existed in those neighborhoods and who will continue to have to live with these changes. So I would just ask that we take a step back like we did at the Ag Zone and say, instead of sending a no to council, saying, we'll table it until we come up with a better solution with more public engagement and forward that off to council, just like we did at the Ag Zone. I would love to see that, and that's my main plug here. Thank you.
Again, five minutes to the second.
Stephen Beal, five-seventy-five Johnson Road. I want to repeat some of the comments that I made before with respect to the petition for the change of language in T four-two B. As I mentioned before, that language is very much at issue in litigation currently pending in the Superior Court. And that proposal, while some may have viewed it as being applicable to stable ridge only, was not that. It was a proposal to amend the text of T four-two B generally. And that was strictly a text amendment. These items, numbers five through eight, are all with respect to map amendments of specific areas, neighborhoods within the city in different locations. But the problem here is transferred from that prior text ordinance discussion because at the moment, the interpretation of T four-two B is very much at legal issue. And it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to rezone specific parcels or areas of the city to a new zone when what you are permitted to do within that zone is at legal issue and will be determined sometime in the fairly near future. So I, I think this is putting the cart before the horse to attempt to do amendments to maps when what one may do within those maps, specifically with respect to setbacks and length of access to projected development, whether it's five feet from a public street or five hundred feet from a way of some sort, is at issue. Thank you.
Good evening. Kelly Henry, ninety-seven Loring Avenue. And I'd just like to plead to you to think about quality versus quantity. We, I am a fifth-generation Auburn resident, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a law-abiding, law-abiding citizen, and I do my part to make my neighborhood great. There are a lot of other people in my neighborhood, they might not be great people, but they're part of what makes Auburn great. And I want you to think about that versus what, getting enough numbers to have certain things or services. I think we're putting the cart in front of the horse here because there are many things beyond water and sewer that haven't been thought about. There's sidewalk access, there's city transportation, there's other things that I don't think that area is ready yet for multifamily units. A lot of my other neighbors have spoke before on this. And I'd just like you to know that I care about my neighbors, my neighbors care about me. They're what makes the City of Auburn great. And I want to make the City of Auburn attractive to my three children and my seven grandchildren. We have to think about that. Thanks.
Hi, Dee Chapman, forty Vivian Street in Auburn. We were here a few weeks ago, not quite understanding city politics, and I would welcome anybody that wants to explain them to me, I'll make time. But I want to thank you all for taking the time to hear me once again. So we were here a few weeks ago regarding, and it's in this map, that, on the fifteen acres, and you all voted it down, and thank you very much, on the fifteen acres. So last night, we were at a city council meeting. They also voted it down, that they would not change that zoning of that fifteen acres. To my surprise, I get home and I open a letter and I have this. So I actually, I believe I spoke with you. I just called to ask, is this fifteen acres in this proposal? Yes. So I'm here to ask, we, we need to step back. We need to take a break on this New Auburn area. I don't know if anybody has ever driven up and down. They didn't get it wrong when they made the ordinance, when they did the city ordinance, when they developed these neighborhoods. These neighborhoods are grids. They're all grids, they're very compact neighborhood, dead-end streets. I welcome anybody to come down any one of those little side streets. You're lucky to be able to park one car on one side with having another, you just can't. I would ask the planning board, and I'm also going to seek legal advice myself, on how to have this fifteen acres. We can't keep, I mean, we're getting exhausted and the, the planning board has said no. The city council has said, said no. But now we're going to try to sneak it in on this map? I mean, this is not showing the citizens of Auburn that our feelings of being, or our opinions even matter. They're just going to go and, this is what the neighborhood says, they're just going to do what they want and we're going to wake up one day and it's going to be there. So another point that was brought up was this turnpike thing. Years and years ago, I grew up in New Auburn on Joint School Road. Years and years ago, it was talked about Riverside Drive, that's where the exit was going to come off. I have never heard of Broad Street, so now I'm on another mission. But I would welcome anybody to come into the New Auburn area, having these lot, these businesses, these five-story buildings and I, it doesn't represent, it will change the graphic of our neighborhood. It's going to change everything about what we have all known. It's already compacted, I don't know how much more you can put in there. And for one, there's no street that can handle a turnpike, so, but I'm not educated on that, so I won't speak on that. But I would ask this board to make a recommendation to remove this fifteen-acre lot that we fought five years ago, we fought four weeks ago, we fought last night, and we have everyone telling us, no, we're not changing the zoning there, and then we're here again. So I would just ask, please, can we slow down a little bit on this New Auburn project? I don't know, maybe try to find, buy the land, the golf course off the Chinese guy. I mean, that'd be a perfect place to put some tall buildings, apartments. But we cannot support developers just coming in saying, I want this in this neighborhood. No, we need to back off. I know it's not going to fix our housing crisis in these type of neighborhoods. We have a lot more land that this would, these type of suggestions would work. So I would just ask that this fifteen acres be removed and that we slow down on the rest. And I think we also need to take a ride and, and check out the area. Thank you.
Evening. Mike Adler, eighty-two Loring Avenue. Here again, I hear some things I repeat from the previous person. But having growing up in New Auburn on Ipswich Street, been there, folks were there for over fifty years. Left there, got married, bought a house on Paul Street, lived on Paul Street for thirty-five years. Moved to Loring Avenue, seventeen years ago now? Seventeen. Been on Loring Avenue. We moved there because it was a single-family neighborhood. I don't see what's wrong with the zoning that is in place as it is now. As far as I'm concerned, the zoning is correct the way it is. To move this to the four-point-two B is totally wrong. Because that will allow for a bunch of other things, just as you previously heard. There again, you want to talk about storefronts? Little history. Gilmett Store at the end of Ipswich Street, closed. Rabel's Self-Service Store on the corner of Paul and South Main, closed. Coolins Variety on South Main Street, closed and torn down. I don't know what you're trying to accomplish by doing this. I had one counselor tell me, well, wouldn't it be nice if you could just walk down the sidewalk to a side store? I can do that right now. I can walk to Wheeler's. I can walk to Roy's Food Land and I can walk back home. Why do we need to infill and change zoning just to please developers? People want to build homes, they want to cut down the size of the setbacks. And right now, you can put a house on a very small lot and cram everybody right in there. If I wanted to live like that, I'd move to Raleigh, North Carolina, or I'd move to Florida, or I'd move to Georgia, where all these houses, you can reach out and touch your neighbor. I don't want that. That's not what we bought into. That's what, not what I pay taxes for. As far as I'm concerned, this four-point-two B As far as I'm concerned, this 4.2B is an end run around by the city staff and the city council to get their way, just as they did up here on the top of the hill. Thank you.
Good evening again. For the record, my name is John Cleveland. I live at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I'm here really to speak in support of the staff's recommendations here and direction that they laid out to you earlier, that this is premature to be acting not only on this item, but on item six, seven, and eight as well. You know that there's a pending litigation. We're waiting for that to happen. That's a major impact on what the text language will be. They've described to you a number of changes that they feel should be made in the text to modify the 4.2B. We don't know what those are going to be as citizens because they haven't happened yet. So there's a real connection between the map and the text. They're not independent things. If you change the map, it comes with the text. So if you don't know what changes you have completed yet, why are we changing a map when the public doesn't know really what they're buying into, other than we know that it's already been announced that changes are going to be coming in recommendation? I think it's good to have more public meetings, and I think it's really important to engage your public in what those are. I'm pleased to see a couple of members of the planning board asking questions and having concerns. I'm pleased to see that they understand there is a connection between tabling the first item you did because of pending litigation and trying to get that resolved before we start changing texts again and maps that'll be associated with it. So I would support tabling this item. And frankly, just to save you some time, I support, for all the same reasons, tabling six, seven, and eight as well. Let them do the process. Let you do some planning. And looking at the details, I'd love to have you have a chance to do more in-depth planning and take into consideration comments you've heard this evening and previous to this. So I really urge you not to act on this item and to table it as well as all of the other items.
My name's Jeffrey Harmon. I live at 34 Vista Drive. I too think that these items, and being respectful of your time, I'll just get up once and say this and not get up and say the same thing four times, but I think it applies to all of these. These are, it's very premature to have these items on the planning board agenda. As Mr. Seer pointed out a year ago, he led a very, very long and detailed, comprehensive discussion regarding Area A, when A through D were on the agenda, and the planning board never got through the discussion on A to get to B, C, and D, in which the same type of discussion needs to take place. So the second thing I would say is, I'm not really sure how anyone expects the people that live in these affected neighborhoods to even understand what they're going to come up here and comment on. We haven't had a detailed discussion. We haven't had any type of real planning activities that engage the public outside of being able to come up and speak for five minutes on something that we don't know what it is because the staff has already said what's before us today is going to change. They already have other ideas about maps. And the items that you just took up, this, we don't even know all of the items. The staff has ideas about 4.2B. They haven't come before you. The public doesn't know what they are. We have the prior item out changing the setback. I think the planning board needs to step back, take these things off the agenda for public hearing and enactment, have a series of workshops, focus on these, work through them like they started to a year ago, so you can get a good sense from the public about their feeling in each one of these zones, and then bring this forward. Tabling this to next month isn't going to get you there, right? You can table it, but you need to have a different process, and you need, it needs, before it comes for the planning board in this type of form, you need to get the public input so there's a proposal in each zone that these people know what it is and can make meaningful comments about. Thank you very much.
Garrett Samard, 157 Cook Street, Auburn. I've got a little bit of experience in dealing with the public through my job here at the city. I've since retired as a fire prevention officer. I also have projects that we'll put in behind my house, so I had the effects of having a project put in behind my house without all of the codes being followed. One of the things I'd like to mention to you in general about these codes and putting these buildings in is remember, when people get crammed in together, people tend to start having issues. Issues are going to have to be dealt by, by the police department, the school department, fire department. And at some point, it actually affects the safety of the people in these buildings. Most of my experience in the city has been dealing with apartment houses where people are pawning each other, that type of thing. I have dealt with single-family homes, but most of them were with people in the urban area. So I just want to keep that in the back of your mind. When we're putting, if I could put an apartment house behind my house if I wanted to, I could build an in-law apartment. But eventually, these are going to become, my in-law apartment is going to become just a regular rental, and now we're going to have a landlord-tenant issue we're going to have to deal with. And it's going to happen. It does happen. And I just want to make you aware of that, that it's something to be aware of. I'm from New Auburn again. I bought a single-family home. I had the things put in behind my house. Devin, you know where it is. It's really kind of hard to understand that they say they're going to do all these things, and they don't do them. And my question a while back at another meeting like this was, where's the code enforcement that's following up on my buffer barrier? Twenty years ago, the buildings went in, one building went in behind my house. I still don't have that buffer barrier between my house and the project behind it. Two new buildings just went in this past year. Again, they just somewhat of a buffer barrier, but it's not what I expected. So those are the things that I kind of would like to see more. And one of the questions I had a few years ago is, and I'll ask you this, and I'll end by this, is when it comes to buffer barriers for neighbors, why can't we do a bond for a buffer? That way, if the project engineer, the project manager, or whatever, the project doesn't have that buffer put in, then the city can take that money and actually put the buffer in with that bond issue. So those are just some things that I was thinking about. I was listening to what's going on here. And the last thing I want to say is, when you, when I get a letter like this saying, come to the meeting, if anything changes on this letter that I haven't been made aware of, I don't believe you should be able to vote on this without giving us the right information. That's just my own personal belief. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Jerry Drawan from Lane Road in Auburn. A young lady was talking earlier about things popping up in the neighborhood. Lane Road is a dirt road, one lane. You have to almost stop to let the other car go by. Very narrow. I think there are six houses on the road. It was always single-family, maybe rural residential. All of a sudden, we have a group home. I'm not sure, is anyone aware of that? We have a group home at the end of the road, second house from the end. If that group home is legal, if that group home is licensed by the state of Maine, it's in a home that the bank does not accept. It has a rotted sill. The house is ready to collapse. They have a group home. Because it's a group home, you have these physicians, CNAs, RNs. They have by 100%. You know, everybody on the board is looking at me except her.
I just was looking at the map.
You may have more important business to conduct. This is my business.
Sir, she was looking at the map to try to find the road that you're talking about.
I apologize. This is a sore subject because of who is the group home. I don't know who's aware of, who gave them the authorization to go there. The traffic on the street has increased by more than 100%. So the deer, the turkeys, squirrels, it's helter-skelter. I'm retired, so I live there, and I'm there all the time, most of the time. These people come whizzing by my road, my home, 50, 60 miles an hour on a one-lane dirt road. Kids are playing on that road. Neighbors are buying signs to slow down because kids are at play. I talked to a neighbor this evening. He's putting two more signs up. It's ridiculous. There's no speed limit sign. I've gone to the police department. Nobody cares about it. I'm not opposed to Somalis, but this is a Somali group home. Every medical person that goes up and down is Somali. No white people go there at all. And I say that with assurity. I live there. I watch. I see. So let's, like the lady said earlier, let's back off and plan and think about what it is we're doing. I'm at that, I'm in that, what, where the turnpike rotary is planning to go? I don't know what it's called, but anyway, the travel lane? So I'm on both sides. I'm on South Main, and I'm on Broad Street. I've got property all the way to Broad Street. I don't care what the decision is, but I'm concerned with what's going on today on Lane Road. Rural residential does not mean commercial. The owners of Poisson Gas Station purchased the Quonset Hut at the beginning of the street. That is now looking like a commercial. You know what his lot looks like on South Main? That's what it's getting to look like on Lane Road. Who enforces the laws? Police aren't. You guys are just railroading all this stuff through. I'm sitting in a great position, but still, it's being railroaded through. We have to deal with your decisions. Give it some thought.
Good evening. My name's Walter Kreitz, and I have property at 69 Loring Avenue and 108 Loring Avenue. And I'm not commenting on the overall development here that we're talking about, but rather the processes going on, as you heard earlier, we fought the fight for that 15 acres on development on 37 Loring. And you folks, two or three weeks ago, all unanimously voted it down. And again, the council last night followed your lead and voted it down. But one has to wonder why they voted it down when you know what they really want, and all of a sudden, this new T-4-2 shows up right after we closed, kind of closed the case. So my concern is more the process than the results. I feel like by doing a blanket T-4.2B, you're opening Pandora's Box in that area out there. And I can't remember who said it earlier, but the natural progression of the neighborhood will take care of that. Darwinism. That will grow, and it will multiply, and there's plenty of places out there to do that. But to open the lid on the multitude of different uses that fall into this zoning, I don't feel is appropriate at this time. Thank you.
Okay, so any other members of the public that would like to come forward?
Thank you very much. Bruce Ryu, 85 Mary Carol Street. If you look at numbers five, six, seven, and eight, we're talking almost 1,500 acres, I guess minus 100 and so, maybe 1,350 acres, that we're looking to add new, or change the zoning on in the City of Auburn. And we've already changed, what, 1,700 acres in the Court Street area, or whatever the quantity was. So it seems like we have huge, huge areas of our big city, and rather than pick an area where we want to develop, we're going to just change the entire, the entire section of the city, just, you know, cut it in four, and take this one here and change it all. And that's a little bit scary, and I'll tell you why it's scary. Because most of us, and these are all my neighbors here, and we've talked a lot about this, we're all scared. We're afraid that the people, you know, that are going to build multifamily dwellings in our neighborhood are going to be people who live in Portland, Falmouth, San Francisco, Boston, and they're really not going to care about their property in the way that we care about our property. That was the issue on that 15 acres. You know, the 15 acres, you put multifamily housing in there, the people that made the presentation don't even live in our community. And so they're going to build it, they're going to capitalize on it, they're going to fill their money, their pockets up with money, and then they really don't care what's going to happen. And when you're talking about the New Auburn neighborhood, that's a problem. And it's a problem that we would like to take a little bit more time to discuss because I mowed my lawn today, and my property looks pretty damn good. And I know Mike's does, and I know Gary's does, and I know that Walter's does. They all take care of their property. And now we may be having neighbors that don't, that really don't care, and we're scared. And so please, give us a little bit of consideration. Let's, let us work with you so that we understand what's going to be happening to our neighborhoods before you make these really big 1,350-acre decisions. Thank you.
I'm Louise Dakota, and I live on Lucille Street in New Auburn. And I want to thank you all for being here and doing what you do. I know that's really important. I feel like there's an elephant in the room with illegals that are coming into our country, and they need housing. And my heart goes out to them, but I can't help but wonder if the housing issues that we're trying to develop are for people who have not even been registered citizens. My neighborhood's great, and I love my neighborhood. I can hear the turnpike a little bit if the air is just right. I don't want the turnpike going down South Main Street. It would change my whole neighborhood. It would rip off the front lawns of everybody on South Main Street. I hope that you consider that a lot of the housing needs will be with people who need to be able to walk to the store, or walk to the library, or walk to facilities that they need, you know, gas, whatever. I love the Poissons. They're, they've been good to me for 35 years, but they're, they're a commercial property in a residential neighborhood. And it was mentioned earlier how we could have restaurants or other businesses in this kind of zoning, and it doesn't belong in that neighborhood. So I would like to have you consider building housing in locations that are more central to the community, near Hannaford, near the library, near the police station. There's, there's lots of land down there that could be renovated. Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the public that would like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I will seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor? Okay, so we had some great dialogue and discussion with the public comment. Okay, so we had some great dialogue and discussion with the public comment. I took a lot of notes. I know I saw many of my peers also take notes. Did anyone have any questions that you identified from the public that you would like to address with staff?
I think the only expressed question I heard was who enforces land use laws, i.e. code enforcement?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming that the gentleman that asked that is going to want more than just who does it, but how would you go about contacting them?
Yeah, how about we, if you want to contact me, I haven't talked to you about it yet. Maybe we can connect on a second. So we'll connect after the meeting.
That gentleman also asked a question about who allowed certain things. So the planning board doesn't actually approve everything that happens in the city. Anything that's allowed by right is allowed by right if it's allowed in the zoning. Projects will only come to us if they're allowed by right but require site plan special exception review. So site plan special exception review are actually uses that are allowed by right so long as you demonstrate that you've met the criteria under site plan review and special exception. Those uses are deemed to be either dense enough or to possibly have a big enough impact that they require public hearing. But most of the things that get built in the city will never come in front of us, so.
With the comment about the group home, it's my understanding that that is a state permit and not a city permit. Is that correct?
It does require state approval. But in some cases, the city, if they have a certain number of people living there, then the city could get involved.
Over three people?
I don't know the exact number based on the, you know, the building codes and stuff like that, but there's a threshold there. We'd have to look at each case individually based on the, you know, the home, size of the home, number of people living there.
And group homes are allowed in the zone as it stands and they are needed. So folks need different levels of care and all are welcome in any neighborhood in Auburn.
Public comment is already closed and we're having discussion amongst the board and staff.
There's actually about 42 licensed group homes in the city.
Okay, any other questions that we want to address from the public?
Yeah, I heard a lot about wanting to have more involvement, maybe workshopping versus just here's the proposal, not having, not being part of the original conversations. I certainly would be welcome to kind of having that process play out rather than just here's the proposed area, take it or leave it. So just my thoughts.
Sure, that's interesting because that was brought forth from the public, right? And that's what we're discussing. But yeah, that was also something that resonated with me as well in terms of, now we're kind of conflating the two issues a little bit, but that's fine. In terms of, we have in our packet a suggested motion which is to table. There is other options or are there other options from staff to workshop this?
So there could be additional workshops, but I think, I think we need to treat, I would like for this to be treated like a workshop. So if you have some suggestions, if we are hearing the public that we want to add something, you know, I heard, in particular, I can go through my notes, what, you know, what I want to address is certainly what Evan was talking about in addressing that area that makes sense for higher density. You know, I do want to add the study area for the sewer and water maps. And I want to go back to the planning board meeting a year, that happened a year ago. And I suggest, you know, planning board members that weren't here a year ago, go back to that. There was a lot of lengthy discussion that really.
Do you know what day that was? That way they can.
I think it was like June 21st.
We'll provide that. We'll provide that.
There were also workshops and things, so just know that there's going to be multiple.
John, I want to be careful about how we're kind of addressing it at this point in time because I think I heard you say, maybe I misinterpreted, that you want to treat this as a workshop. And this is not a workshop. This is a public hearing, zoning map amendment discussion with a motion. And what I would like to do is, I hear what you're saying. There is an opportunity to workshop this, right? Because not only do we have some opportunity to delve further into this, but there are also other items that we are not, we don't know about, right? So the future traffic planning considerations, like that's something that we can workshop. So I just want to make sure that as a board, we're not treating this as a workshop, that if we're having one, it's truly considered to be a workshop. Does that make sense? I just want to make sure we're not blending.
Yes, that makes sense. I just wanted to add that collectively the board could add items that, you know, I've got four here that were written in text.
Oh, sure.
And we could add more to that.
I understand.
So my only fear about workshops is I'm worried that folks in the public think that a workshop is going to be less formal than a hearing, and it is. However, there's no opportunity for public comment during the workshop unless, unless the board chooses to change its rules of order during that workshop. So I'm wondering if, I don't know if staff can do this, what kind of turnaround you can do. I'd be willing to bet that when residents hear workshop, they think sitting down together and talking back and forth. I would not want to create some sort of illegal meeting where the planning board just sits down with residents and talks. But I'm wondering what kind of turnaround there could be between this month and next month to set up some sort of neighborhood charrettes with maybe, and I'll throw the chair and the vice chair under the bus, you know, with one of them present or maybe another person they appoint that could possibly answer questions from a planning board point of view with notes being brought back to us. I understand the desire from residents to have that kind of discussion. I also know that if we sat down in this room and just said, let's all talk together, we would, we would get nowhere. But there's a way to kind of do that in a satellite way where all that information can come back to us and there could be representatives going. I don't want, I don't want to belabor the process for no reason. So I'm asking, what kind of turnaround could that look like for staff to set something like that up?
You know, I think we need probably at least two weeks' notice and then, you know, we could set something up. We've done community conversations in the past. We could certainly do that again. And then, you know, work with our community outreach folks and get the word out through social media.
If I remember correctly, you guys actually did this in this neighborhood at Walton last year.
We did.
Over the same exact topic, right? The same, yeah, so.
Yeah, so and I want to be, again, I want to make sure that we're being clear and organized with this. So when you're talking about this community outreach, you're specifically talking about on the agenda, item number five, Area A. Is that correct?
We are in a public hearing about Area A. If you want me to only speak about Area A, that is fine. I'll say an Area A and then I will subsequently say we should think about doing this in every area. But I would think that.
But I just want to make sure that we're very clear and directive about what we're specifically speaking about.
It was part of our process last year. Those meetings did happen. I'm going to guess that there are folks who spoke tonight who had no idea that those meetings happened to last year when they happened. I don't know. We can send public notice, but you can't like force people to know what's happening. So we've done that. I think we can do it again. You know.
I was kind of, not quite related to, but there was a point from the public made a couple of times that I wanted to address that this was, this change was before, so as we're discussing a year ago, a little more than a year ago. And that the petition that was brought to us last month was brought by a citizen's petition who got 25 signatures separate from this zone change. They're not related. It wasn't something being tried to be shoved through as opposed to something a citizen brought before us. And this was already something we planned to revisit. So I just wanted to make that point of clarity.
Okay, so as I see it, oh, go ahead.
I do have a question. With that 16 acres that was turned down by us and city council, is there a reason why that was included in this zone change and not left out?
Yeah, so that area was, 37 Loring, right? The one from, yeah. That area was included last year in the same Area A zone change. And I have to say, like it being on, in this area tonight is nothing more than a coincidence from it being brought up again. It was kind of put on the, on hold somewhat indefinitely because other items came up last year and have just been, as we know, taken up, taking up our time until late at night each month. So this appeared, this was going to come on the agenda and then we also got the petition to rezone and they, they happened to kind of fall in this way, but that's.
Would it be possible to leave that out since it was voted down twice?
Well, I think that would be a conversation that like potentially we would workshop, right? Like I think so, right? And I'm not saying I'm not for it or against it, but I think that's a perfect example of a dialogue and discussion that Amanda wants to have.
Yep.
Right? So, and I'm sure other folks have other ones as well, right?
So point of order with regard to moving along with A, do we need to first make a motion to table the decision and then make a subsequent motion to direct staff to create a workshop for this area in order for us to move forward?
I think you can do that in the same motion if you'd like. You could, you could, you could table the motion and then direct us in the same thing if you want to, if that's easier, but however you'd like to structure it.
Yeah, and I just want to be cautious too. If we table this motion, which is fine, the recommendation is to August 8th. So I would like to personally, and I don't know how this, everyone else feels, to a certain date, not like indefinitely, you know what I mean? Like we need a date certain.
Yeah, and I would, unless we're going to do a formal workshop, I think we need to call it either community conversation or neighborhood charrettes or something like that, very specific. We're directing staff to do something outside of, because a workshop really comes back here and is a separate process than the public hearing process. So we really want to stay focused on this process that we're on currently right now. But then if you guys want to, you know, hearing what the public wanted, if we want to have a community conversation or a neighborhood charrette, we need to, you know, as Catherine said, you could, you could put it as a separate motion or you could combine it all together as a line item.
So to organize this for everybody, right? We've got a motion to table to August 8th with considerations. We have the discussion of a workshop and then we have the additional neighborhood dialogue that Evan had suggested. So there's three suggestions out there or options that I've heard.
John, does giving, if we ask for, if we table it and ask for the neighborhood charrette, are you able to take feedback and incorporate it for August 8th? Or should we table it for September 12th to allow staff subsequent time? I think, I think we could do the, the community conversations within two weeks. Collectively gather that information. We did a lot of public outreach the last time. We only had three people?
Yep.
Four people? I mean, it was, and it was a great one-on-one conversations. We had great conversation. But there wasn't, there wasn't a lot there to report back to the, you know, to the planning board in terms of input to make it better, what we can do, things like that. We really want to have the public engage with, with how can we make it better? And what are some of the things that we could do to, to make the zone better or why we want to leave some of these areas out? But at the end of the day, we're going to, we're still going to want to move forward with these four areas as I believe it was directed by the council and then, you know, supported in the comp plan to, you know, move this as a, you know, a future growth area. So we've got to address that.
And for folks, oh, sorry. Just for folks who are wanting to come to the community conversation, for those, we do, we did not email, we did not mail out individual letters because it is geared towards the whole city. And we frankly just, if we had more time and more folks, I'm sure we could, but we just can't for things that are outside of the public hearings. So we do advertise those on Auburn's social media and on the website. And if you have any questions about the areas, if you want to contribute, if you have questions about what T4.2B means, what could go there, concerns, we'd really welcome you to come and just keep checking the website because I'm sure over the next few days we'll have information about those.
Is that, so if that's the dissection, the decision that we, we make to choose to go in that direction? I understand utilizing the social media platform. Is it possible to also, in the way we do public notice in the paper, put public notice in the paper and ask the paper to put it on their community calendar? I say that because I'm thinking, my parents are not on social media, but they read the paper every day, right? That's the sort of media that they consume.
Yeah, I think that's a great recommendation. I think a public notice in the paper is appropriate.
I agree, I agree, Evan. But what I was going to say is, and I also agree to tabling it to a date certain because we've been directed by council to address it. But I think, I just want to point out, I think there's going to be a lot of the same concerns about T4.2B not having finalized language at, you know, whatever date that is, in August or whatever. If we haven't already had the petition from item three settled or litigation that was mentioned in public comments settled, I think those concerns are still going to exist.
Yeah, I think we can continue to work on it. And if we get to August 8th and we decide that that's a large enough concern that we really are not going to do anything until we, we know the outcomes of those things and we could do that then. But I don't, I think we should, should continue to work and, you know, ask staff to reach out and do these community conversations. I don't think we should hold off on those things.
I agree with that, that's.
All right, this is all good stuff. So at this point in time, we're either going to continue the discussion or I would seek a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to table the decision, the decision on this item to a date certain of August 8, 2023 for Area A described in the staff report and presented in the public hearing and shown on the attached map from urban residential, multifamily, suburban and rural residential to T4.2B with the five modifications identified in the staff report and with the direction that staff hold neighborhood, neighborhood conversation in this neighborhood and that part of that neighborhood conversation consists of allowing residents to provide feedback as deemed appropriate by staff. That might be letting them do right, send something, write, write feedback at the meeting or whatever. And that those be noticed both as they were last year on social media, but also in the paper.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Do I have any conversation? All right, so seeing none, I will, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. Okay, so next item on the agenda is a public hearing zoning map amendment, part two, T42, T4.2B, Area B. So this is Area B in your staff packet.
This one is not so involved. The size and the area really, nothing changes here in particular. Just going from UR to T4.2B. Again, this is a, specifically a change in the, in the. Again, this is a, specifically a change in the, in the actual map and the coloration of the map, and just updating that.
Okay, so any questions for staff before I open it up to public comment?
Why isn't there a possible option which connects this to Area A? I think if I remember our discussion last year, we said this is an island and we should either. There's no point, it, it's already an island of urban residential in between rural residential and low-density country residential and ag. We're looking at form-based code at the top of Vicarree. Why, why did, why did that not connect? I, I know that we talked about there's that ag strip, right? On the, on the, the north side, but I guess I just don't understand why that wasn't presented as a possible option here.
So, you know, we, I guess we, at the end of the day, we stuck with this because there's existing sewer and water that runs there. There is, there is opportunity for additional housing. You know, is there a lot of opportunity for multifamily housing? Probably not, but it allows the expandability and the flexibility in some of these lots that could be split and, and built and have some more additional infill. With that, it could support upgrading sewer and water and again supports the, the number of units that we need to really get, goes back to that transportation piece to, to get overall numbers in South Auburn up in terms of supporting another interchange from the highway. So we looked at areas with sewer and water. This has it. There's opportunity for infill. Form-based code really allows the most flexibility with that, so that was the reason why we kept it there. We, we looked at some creative ideas for some strip zonings along there. We took, we even spoke with, as far as speaking with the landowner, the ag zone, they're real adamant against it. So we, we, you know, we only have so much time in the day, and so we, we moved, we're moving forward with this recommendation. Certainly if the planning board chooses to move in a different direction, we'd be open to that.
Okay, I, I, it just doesn't make sense to me from a, from a, a planning standpoint that if we're going to plan these areas for denser infill and connection, that this would not be connected to Area A, which is quite literally only three lots away. Okay, there's like three lots that separate this from Area A. And so as I, if I put my future planning hat on, I go, I don't want to have some weird bridge in between these two, these two areas that consist of three lots, right? So that's, that's my comment when I see this.
We could, we could prepare that as an, as a, maybe an option to, to see what that would look like. Would you think, this is kind of a question for you, Evan. Is your vision to kind of extend it on the south side of Vicarree as a, as a smaller strip of a certain length? I know you don't, you're not a fan of doing strips, or would you think to extend it back? I'm just curious about what your, what your preference would be there.
My preference would be that Area A extends down, down South Main Street so that way, and that the Area A would not terminate at the, on the north side of Vicarree, but would go across and that it would be a more contiguous. That, if you're asking my preference, that's, that's, that's how I envision that.
Okay.
And, and that's the, that's the preference that we explored and, and we got a lot of negative feedback, so.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, so those that would like to come forward to talk about Area B, you have five minutes, come to the podium, name and address. Give it a minute. Okay, seeing none, I will seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Excellent, motion carries. All right, so back to staff and discussion around this motion. So I, I am in agreement with Evan, like, you know, obviously, like, from a, you know, future planning perspective, the more cohesive we can get with parcels of land, I'm, I'm absolutely more in favor of that as well. So, you know, I'll just pause and say that I'm in agreement with, with Evan.
You heard it here first, all right.
Don't let it go to your head.
I might, I might be jumping the gun here, but I'm going to guess that we're going to end up with a similar outcome. And unless, is there anyone else on the planning board that wanted to comment on the map itself? I'm going to make a motion to table the decision to a date certain of August 8, 2023 for Area B described in the staff report and presented in the public hearing and shown in the attached map from urban residential to T4.2B with the following modifications, that the map be updated to reflect matching color of existing zoning and that staff provide an alternative option demonstrating continuity between Area A and Area B and that staff hold neighborhood conversation for this area regarding this area in compliance with the description of the neighborhood conversation from item A.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Excellent, motion carries. So moving on to the next agenda items, a public hearing zoning map amendment, T4.2B, Area C. Again, we'll go back to staff on this.
Again, this one, 148 acres. We're going from UR and suburban residential to T4.2B. Really, the footprint is, is exactly the same. The only difference is that we're updating the boundary to include parcels 198036, 2.2 acres, 198037, 1.30 acres, and then 198038 for 1.2 acres. It's really the, the yellow area that is on the proposed change map that was inadvertently left out of there. There was some discussion if it was going to be general business. We went back and we didn't find anything that had been approved as general business. So therefore, we're just want to correct that. And again, matching the color to reflect the existing zoning and then adjusting the acreages up a little bit. So that'll be, you know, two, two and a half, three acres or so increase.
Okay, any discussion for staff before I open it up to public comment? Okay, so I seek a motion to open up to, for public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Excellent, motion carries. So I think we know the drill at this point in time. Would any members from the public like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I will seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Excellent, motion carries. So back to staff and discussion around how to, any thoughts on, on, on Area C and the motion? Yeah, so what I heard from staff, right? So it's about, you know, matching the colors. It sounds like there were some parcels of land that were inadvertently not accounted for, so I do appreciate that extra level of attention. I mean, if there's no questions, I'll seek a motion. I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion to table the decision to a date certain of August 8, 2023 for Area C described in the staff report and presented in the public hearing and shown on the attached map from urban residential and suburban residential to T4.2B with the following modification, with the modifications identified in the staff report and directing staff to hold the neighborhood conversation on this area utilizing the same directives from the two previous items.
Excellent, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, do you have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. All right, so I think we all know what is coming up next. Item number seven on the agenda, public hearing zoning map amendment, T4.2B, Area C.
Area D.
D, thank you. I was like, wait a minute, we just did that. I get to turn the page. Yay, thank you.
Area D, 288 acres was being considered in the original proposal. The, from UR, GB, multifamily suburban to T4, 4.2B. The biggest piece here was the, the, the land north of the stream and whether do we include that in the zone change or not? And partially was that one of the planning board members last year, and I'm just going to refresh some of those who were here as memory, but it was, that parcel that is now labeled the GB area that here is in orange is actually owned by the YMCA. And if we had the zoning as proposed, T-4.2B, they wouldn't be able to, to essentially build their recreational facility there. So if that's where the growth is going to be, I think they initially purchased that land to do that specifically. Noting some of the comments from the planning board sta, yeah, planning board and staff, you know, we don't like to, you know, have zoning that is isolated if we zone the remaining of those parcels. So we suggest a 100-foot strip along the roadway there. With the name of the road, I can't, I don't remember off the top of my head. It's.
North River.
North, North River Road. There's a substantial amount of road frontage there. And, you know, in the overall planning with community development, some of the board members and some of the thought process on that is that if we allow the form-based code there, it really allows small lots to be developed along there and adds a lot of value to the YMCA to sell off 100-foot strip and get multiple lots and use that money as an asset to build the new YMCA. We, you know, this community really needs a pool, and we're looking at creative ways to get to that point. So that's why we're suggesting adding this proposed T4.2B area that wasn't originally submitted to you from the start. So unfortunately, I was on vacation. I didn't get a chance to look at this until recently. Eric brought it to us, he went on vacation and we weren't able to update this map until recently, so not within a, a day or two ago. But I, I, I just wanted to try to correct that. I wanted to try to get it right for what I think is an important community asset and to, you know, address some of the zone, address that with, partly with zoning. So we're adding the additional lots, updating the map and acres, the total overall acreages, and again, the, the color of that. And I've identified that in the suggested motion with the lots and the, the color, coloring and the adjusted acreage.
Okay, any questions for staff?
So the general business is owned by YMCA?
Yes, for the most part.
And so they want to change it to T42B so they can, they want houses and?
Well, potentially, that, that's an option for them. I mean, I think that's a board decision.
Right, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I thought that's what you said, so I was just.
It's, it's an option for them.
Yeah.
Well, I, I kind of feel like I'm getting sold, like, wouldn't this be great for the Y? So I guess that's going to be what I'm told. I want some kind of affirmation from the Y, that.
Yep.
That they wouldn't, because to do sort of a weird little strip means that you've made a weird little strip. And so if we're doing it because we're saying the Y is actually, you know, going, th, this is going to help us further the goal of putting this facility out there, and we all agree planning that this is the type of, that we do need this type of facility, okay, then we can kind of maybe help there, but even then, at that point, I would kind of question, like, I, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that for a private resident who was like, well, I'd like the rest of my lot to stay this way, but if you could go ahead and zone that so it's more dense, so I can cut it off and sell it, that would be great, you know? I mean, I kind of.
Could they do that with a petition, though?
They could do that with petition, and I guess if they did that with petition.
Right, I'm just trying to.
I, I, I would look at it a little differently, but I'm kind of like, I, I, A, I don't know if the Y wants this, and B, it, it. We get accused of doing all kinds of slimy things that we don't actually do in a slimy way. This is one of the few times I've looked and said, if we did this, this would look really, this is like, I don't know. Like, we, you know, like, I, I feel like, I, I think that we actually do a really good job up here, even though there are plenty of folks that disagree with me. I look at this and I go, oh, man, I don't, you know, like, I, I understand where it was coming from. I guess as I, as I put it forward, I just think it, it's.
Do you think, I mean, we could certainly ask the YMCA board their opinion on that, something that we could bring back.
That's hurdle number one. Hurdle number two for me is the idea that we would spot zone the Y's land so that they could make a profit off it, to be able to do something that.
On their word.
Yeah.
But would it better our community, like John had said, putting it in a pool and having that be available?
Yeah, but not everyone's going to say that. I could say I think it would better our community if I had a, a strawberry farm up, up on my lot on Granite Street and go to the city and go, you know, can you please do this for me so I can get it done? And then, you know, I, I get that it's the Y. I'm not, I don't have a problem with the Y. I think they're a really good organization. I, I just have some real trepidation about the idea of essentially kind of spot zoning something for them so that they can make a profit, number one, and then what Stacy just alluded to, the idea that, and that's all going to happen on some sort of promise and a whim, kind of, I don't know, it just doesn't.
Would that be a question for the lawyer?
I kind of like where Tony, I think I like where Tony was going, where we don't include it, and if that's something that, that the Y board really wants, then they can make the petitions and they can come forward.
Go through the process.
And we can have that discussion then.
We do have that process for, you know, I just feel like we've done it before.
I'm in agreement with Evan, Tony and Dave.
So the other, the other piece of that, then we would not include those other four lots on the, on the top end as well. So we, we stay status quo. And that, then that's fine.
So I'm going to open it up to public comment, and then we can circle back and then have further discussion with staff before I make a motion.
So moved to open public comment.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, so let's see if there's any public comments. It does not appear, so I will seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Excellent, all right, so we're back to staff. Yeah, no, I'm kind of circular, but right. But to that end, you know, I, I am in agreement with that, and I think it's more, you know, of the idea of, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with Evan.
Yeah, I mean, we made changes for the guy with the clay.
The guy with the what?
The clay who, you know, they wanted his land for clay. I mean, I just feel like we do, do certain things for people if they want to make money. It's not our.
Well, as I recall, we didn't change that. That was just required, it required a site plan approval because he was, he was mining a resource.
No, correct, but it was his own land and he could do what he wanted, and he asked the planning board, you know what I mean? It was a process.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I understand, but we didn't like rezone his property.
No, 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 no.
Sort of thing, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Okay, if not, I'll seek a motion.
I make a motion to table, to table the decision to a date certain of. I make a motion to table, uh, to table the decision to a date certain of August eighth, two thousand and twenty-three for area D described in the staff report and presented in the public hearing and shown on the attached map from urban residential general business and multifamily suburban to T point, uh, T four point two B. Ooh, which one of these, are these parcels, the parcels?
It's the general business, right?
You need two.
Which, which, which two?
You need number two.
Okay, uh, with the following modification, update the map to reflect matching color of existing zoning. Okay, and to direct staff to have a neighborhood conversation with regard to area D that meets the qualifications for the, the previously described neighborhood conversations.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, do you have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. Excellent. Okay, so next item on the agenda is the extension. Brickyard Commons is requesting an extension of their approvals for their Brickyard Commons project. Originally approved on June twenty-eighth, this item is pursuant to section sixty thirteen oh eight expiration of approval. So I will hand it to staff. And then if we have the applicant here, we'll ask the applicant to come forward. And then there is no public comment.
Yep, so this one is pretty straightforward. We've seen, we've seen extension requests pretty frequently over the last few months. So the suggestion is for the board to approve a one-year extension. So the facts here are that Mike Gatto, who is the agent, the applicant for this project, well, really the agent representing the applicant, submitted a letter on May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, which was in, which was within the thirty-day, or it, it met the thirty-day requirement of it to submit a request before the expiration of an approval. To request that the, that the board approve the, the, um, approve the extension. So the applicant, the reason given was that the applicant has not been able to, um, to, to move forward yet because the terms of a purchase agreement with the, with the owners had, that the owners had for a sale of the project could not be met, but they're actively marketing the project. And they do intend to still go along with it. They also noted that the original, that the approvals from named DEP were delayed until a few months after the, the original approval, September fifteenth. So they believe that with the additional year, they'd be able to meet the, they'd be able to fall within that extension timeline. So our recommendation is to approve that one-year extension.
Excellent. So are there any questions for staff regarding this request for an extension? Okay, so do we have the applicant? Would the applicant like to come forward and have any discussion around it?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. We did get DEP approvals from that back in September. We had to wait for the appeals period to expire to fulfill the option agreement. The option agreement fell apart because the financing at the same time went from four percent to seven percent. As we all know, the increase in rates and stuff. We have been talking with the same buyer ever since. They now have a package that they're looking for main state housing approval for. They just approved a large amount of money to help some of these projects. We are expecting to know in ninety days, regardless of the ninety-day whether they go forward or not. We have two years under the DEP application. We will be moving forward with the project. So we're just looking for another year, be consistent with that two-year that DEP has so that we can move forward. We have spent another fifty, sixty thousand dollars doing off-site design work. That was only finished last May. So we've been doing the steps, but we just haven't gotten to the end zone.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, so just heading back to staff for discussion. So if there's no discussion, I would seek a motion.
I guess, I guess I, I didn't realize you kicked it back to us. I guess for, for me, when I look at this, the fact that it took an extra two and a half months, you know, initially, the, the request kind of incorporates that that was part of the reason for the extension. You know, certainly the economy or the, the interest rate, I think probably had a, a, a bigger issue with the financing on this. And I, I guess I'm, I'm not one hundred percent sold on, on renewing this. I, I don't, I don't know. It's not sitting right in my head and I can't quite describe why.
Okay.
I think keeping in the timeframe of the two years, like he had mentioned, kinda makes sense for me.
Has there, I'm trying to read this that we got earlier. I just haven't had the time. But has there been chemical spills or am I reading this wrong? From Rihanna LaRose?
Yeah, Tony's referring to a public comment that, that a citizen submitted this afternoon for, for board, for the board to see. I can't personally, I'm not, I'm not sure. I would need to, I would need to look into that.
Typically, the spills would come up, it's a due diligence piece on the buyer's part. It's not necessarily something that, unless the city knows specifically that it's been involved in some type of remediation. But I'm not aware of any of the, any remediation or any spills that have occurred on the site. And I'm not aware of a phase one, that the developer doesn't have, necessarily have to share a phase one or a phase two environmental site assessment with the, with the city. You could certainly ask the applicant that question.
Has the land been worked on at all or has it just been talked with a buyer?
Repeat that again?
Nothing's been done with the land. They're just consulting with the buyer. So how could there be a chemical spill?
Well, there, you know, it is, it is undeveloped land, but there, there could have been something there that happened in the past and the trees have grown back up. That's usually what an envi- a phase one environmental site assessment indicates. But I, I'm not aware of anything in particular.
I thought it was happening now with.
Can we ask the applicant to come back forward for questions? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this an email that you got today?
Yeah, just this afternoon.
I'm not aware of it, but one of the reasons why it took three months longer is accusations that were all proven false. Okay, to get the DEP permit. We, we spent a lot of extra money to get this deep.
So you have a DEP permit now?
We have the DEP permit. We've had it since September.
Okay.
We, there is, I worked on this site for a number of years with a number of clients who have bought it and had phase ones done. There is no contamination on the site. So I, I, I don't know where these rumors are coming from, if it's the same place they've been coming from. Everything's been proven false. Everything. It's pretty frustrating to have people say things that are totally untrue. And so I, I don't know where this came from. I'm not aware of who wrote it. I wish I had it. But I, I can guarantee you, this site is ready for development. It's passed all. I don't even know where it's from. It, it doesn't belong in this public session, but that's up to you folks. We're ready to move forward with this project. There's been a lot of money spent on it. It's up to you.
So it, so the letter, just for folks to, for the public, it's, it's from a, it's from a neighbor. And for, just so folks know, even when there is not public comment, when we receive letters from the public that are requested to be distributed to the, to the board, we, we do that. So anyone can submit a letter for any, any project, and that's something that we always do distribute.
Okay, any other questions for staff or I'll seek a motion?
I make a motion to approve a one-year extension until June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four for an extension to be granted to Brickyard Commons project originally approved on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two under section sixty dash one three zero eight, all conditions of the letter of approval sent on September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the next item I have on the agenda is public comments. So I will seek a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
We don't? Oh, okay. Anyone here from the public would like to come forward? Okay, great. Seeing none, we'll move forward to miscellaneous items. I just wanna also make mention of time as well, right? So as we're heading towards the nine o'clock hour, we would need general, like unilateral consensus to move past nine. So I just wanna be very cognizant of that as we move towards miscellaneous items through the adjournment.
Yeah, so I think next month, we would see the next, these four items coming back through. Presumably, we would see the petition coming back through if that's, if that's, if that has been resolved at that point. The one to change the language for T dash four point two B. We also have, so far, we haven't vetted them with staff yet. We will be doing that later this week. But we have a few more applications for site plans. The first one is Life Forest Conservation Cemetery. So they have, they have completed their site plan and they will be coming back for the board in August. Four oh five Center Street, that building that we evaluated that had burned down. They had made some changes. Those changes are back before us, so they've submitted. We also have an application for a small, I think, an auto repair, an auto repair shop. And that is also going to be here. And I'm not sure if we have others. John, do you know?
None that I can think of at this time.
Okay, so any other questions for staff? If not, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I actually have something that I'd like to, to bring up. And after watching the two city council meetings and the work that we did with regard to the amendments, I don't want those amendments to get lost and feel that there is still work to be done there. So I'd actually like to make a motion to initiate a zone change amendment to the Code of Ordinances definitions in Agriculture Resource Protection District sixty. And that we hold a public meeting at the next August eighth meeting on the amendments approved by us on six six. So we can have further conversation about those.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have discussion?
Yeah, I think it's needed. I have been a little dismayed at the sort of jubilation I've seen around the proposal B and how people are so happy that it's passed. It hasn't escaped my attention that the planning board is always, has been left off those, that group of people who are given their due, uh, whatever for, for getting it done. I think we're gonna talk about that group of people. You need to talk about the hundreds of people that have been involved all the way back to two thousand and eighteen, including folks from Maine Cooperative Extension and Department of Agriculture. But to that point, we did do work. And the proposal that the council adopted doesn't actually protect the zone. You can build a house and not implement your plan. All you have to do is have a plan that gets approved. And then you get to wave goodbye to the code enforcement officer and say, I never have to implement this. You, we have language that indicates that your lot has to be on a public road, but that's not specifically clear to people who do not read zoning. That should be clear. Right? We have an ordinance now that allows someone to put their house at the rear of their lot and disrupt the continuity of the conserved open space or forested land, which is something we specifically didn't want to have happen. So there are all kinds of deficiencies in what the council adopted that I, I agree with, they need to be addressed. And I don't wanna see those fall off the wayside because right now, I think we put a lot of work into something. And what we essentially have is what council directed us to do to begin with, which is simply remove the income standard. That's what's happened. The income standard's been removed with no protection or requirement that someone actually follow through on their plan that they submit. So I, 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 sorry, I'll, I'll stop talking, but.
No, I'm in agreement with Evan and I'm in agreement with Dave.
Um, yeah, I, I, that's my bad. I, we forgot to men, I forgot to mention that the, so for August, there's also gonna be a workshop for the, for the amendments. And we've had some discussion why it's a workshop and not a public hearing. We're being, we need to be just really, I think, prudent about making sure all of the, all of the exact language for these changes are in the public notice. So we've been, we've been advised that a workshop makes sense first. And so I think the plan is to do workshop on amendments in August for, for AgZone. Go ahead with public hearing in September.
Why are we gonna workshop language that was specifically adopted at this, like, that language exists? I think, and, and, which is why I just seconded a motion to have a public hearing as opposed to a workshop. It's gonna come to us and we're either gonna accept those or we're not. And, and each of, one of those individually, they all got adopted last time. They might not all this time. But the idea is that, I don't know why we would workshop language that is already set.
So to further this discussion, and I think I heard you, Dave, it was a little bit quiet, but you made a motion to amend text, correct? Is that what your, your motion was? Or maybe you can repeat it just so we can hear.
Right, I, I basically want a public hearing held on the eighth to go through the amendments one by one and, and basically look at them, talk to them, and then send back those that we approved back to city council to close the loopholes that Ian so eloquently discussed.
And for clarification, I heard in your original language that part of that was initiating a zone change.
Correct.
And that we were gonna hold a hearing for that zone change.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that that's the case, that, that it is initiating a, a, a zone text.
So that's what Dave is suggesting, and staff is suggesting a workshop. So I'm, my personal opinion is I'm in favor of Dave, but I'll just open it up to the group and see what everyone else thinks.
I feel like we've workshopped it enough where a public hearing would be great and solidifying it as well on August eighth.
My worry too is if we have a workshop August, then we take action in September. Then it gets to council in October, but they push the second reading back to November. And the number of permits that have been issued between now and then, you don't know. But I'd be willing to bet that there'd be a lot, a lot of permits for folks who realize that they don't actually have to follow through with this plan, that they can literally just build their house. My worry is I don't want those permits going out.
Okay.
The only, the only item that I have is that any changes that you guys propose in the public hearing, we'll have to have another public hearing. So, you know, if you suggest language in the public hearing, then we would have to have another public hearing on.
That's fine.
Even if it's language that we've already approved or only changes if we make a change.
If we make changes during the meeting.
Any changes or amendments. So that's, that's the reason for the thought process on the workshop. But I hear you, you guys loud and clear. We have no issues with that. But just understand that any kind of changes or amendments, what was originally in that text changed, if there's no clarification language on, particularly Evan with your road frontage and there needs to be a clarification added, that's gonna require another public hearing.
Could we do?
That was a clarification. It, do.
Yeah, I think we caught that in the, the motion from before.
Listen, if, if you guys are saying there's some unclear stuff. Listen, i- if, if you guys are saying there's some unclear stuff, then, then tell us right now, but I'd a- a- and say, no, you know what, that language that you guys approved actually does need to be gone through or whatever, and then, sure, I might, I, I can support something like a workshop. But if the concern is that, well, we just can't change the language that we're looking at, then.
Yeah, I think we nailed, I think we nailed what, what, um, planning board, uh, suggested. We, we made those early on, and we have those, but I'm just saying that if we change anything that we present that night.
During that meeting, correct?
During that meeting, then it, it, it's gonna have to get kicked back again. I just, I'm just laying that out there.
Can we hold a second public comment after we put forth an amendment?
Yep, if you, if you, um, have a public hearing next time, anything changes, we need to do another, that's an option.
That same night?
No, 'cause you got that, you've gotta send notification out, public notice, seven days prior.
But everyone's already here.
You, you've gotta send public notice of the new language. That's, that's, that's what we're getting from the lawyer.
It's a change from the, from the past, um, year or so, so it's, it's, um, it's, it calls for generally, it seems like more public hearings, um, to, to maybe workshop stuff that maybe last year we, we might have been able to, to do here. It's, it's just another, I think, reading of how we should be doing it.
It's staff reticent because of notifications, or I guess, it, it's, it's a citywide hearing, but it's, it's a citywide thing, it's ordinance. We don't send a mailer to everyone. It gets publicly noticed in the paper. So, great, i- if we get here and we make no changes to the language, we can send that to council sooner than later. If we make changes to the language, we have another, we have another public hearing, but we're not spending the, but we're not sending out mailers to do that, we're not taking staff time to do that, that's public notification in paper. So, I, I, I'm, I'm wondering, what, where's the?
You know, there, there, there's, it would just give, uh, you know, planning board a chance to digest it if there's some ju- suggested language. It'd give us the ability to, um, have legal counsel if, if, if the wording is not one hundred percent, if it just doesn't make sense, if there's some things.
You have that now, John, 'cause we're, we've made it, we put it out there, so you have a whole month to go through legal and review that. How many amendments were, there was a lot.
There was like eight amendments, but we did all vote for them, so they're all on public record and be included in the public notice, and then we can have a public hearing. If there's changes, then we have another public hearing, but if not, then we'd at least be able to address it.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think, um, we're not in disagreement, but I, we, our legal, our legal opinion was to have the, the workshop, but if you prefer to do the, I mean, you can make, you can make the, the motions that you wanna make also.
Did, did she, did Sally indicate why a workshop instead of simply having a hearing and then?
You know, she wants. They, they want an opportunity to massage the words, and that, and that's what it comes down to, to make it more clear in the ordinance. Um, I think the intent is there, and I think that they would, we would retain the intent, but there would be some massaging of the language.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, I would seek a motion. Let's see, seek a favor. All those in favor of the motion, sorry. It's been a really long day. All those in favor of the motion that was seconded by Evan, made by Dave, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, all those in favor? There we go.